So at this point, I want to say good evening to our guests. This will like to open up the agenda, the Baldwin Park City Council's special meeting. Today is January the 15th, 2020, the time is 5:35 or 5:36. So at this point, I will have our city clerk, Ms. Ginayama, take the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
He's expected to be here possibly because I know he's not doing well.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
President.
Councilmember Alejandra Javina.
Here.
Mayor Prochel Monica Garcia.
She will also join us shortly.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
President. All right, thank you very much.
This will like to open up the public communication, so anyone wishing to speak, you're approximately at three minutes. Carrillo, do you want to say anything now? Okay, all right. So at this point, I will now go ahead and declare the public communication closed. On the agenda, we have the open session, the public, the Prepared L.A. Disaster Preparedness Presentation by Erica and the American Red Cross and resists to close session, public hearing, pursuant to government code 54957, position, the Public Works Manager, and also item two, the Conference of Labor Negotiators as well. And then we have other, item three, which is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. And number five, Conference of Legal Counselant Anticipated Litigation. So a multitude of different things there at this point. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and go into the disaster preparedness presentation. Come on up, right up here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting us. I'm going to pass around some folders if that's okay.
Thank you. I didn't see you sitting there.
Hi, Monica Garcia.
A little quicker or...
You came in like a nice, very stealthy.
Put on a little bit of cover. Jean, Jean Edmond for you.
Thank you, Mr. Edmond.
So everything's an action. Sorry about that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Erica Proust. So I am the Executive Director for the St. Gabriel Pomona Valley Chapter of the American Red Cross, which falls under the Los Angeles region. And this is Jeanne Wu, who's the Senior Disaster Program Manager for the L.A. region.
Thank you.
So thank you for inviting us, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. So Prepare L.A., Baldwin Park. I'm going to just do a little snapshot of what the American Red Cross is and then go away to Prepare L.A. So our mission is the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of our donors. We have five lines of service, disaster services, of course, blood services, training services, international service, and service to the armed forces. And I also want to mention, if you guys have any questions between my presentation or Jeanne's, please feel free to stop us. We want to make this interactive if you guys have any questions. All right, so Prepare L.A., what is Prepare L.A.? So we are the American Red Cross Initiative that engages and educates leaders in the Los Angeles most disaster vulnerable neighborhoods to build community resilience by providing resources, tools, and trainings, as well as giving the community a voice in planning for their needs. Our strategy is, and this is 3.0, we've gone through 2.0 and 1.0, so we got really creative with the naming of this. We've done this before in Pomona, South St. Gabriel, Rosemead, Almonte, and South Almonte. So we're lucky now to be able to bring this program into Baldwin Park. So the strategy behind this Prepare Los Angeles is key leadership partnerships with the city, of course, with the police department, fire department, and then also other big stakeholders in the city. Community engagement and service, this is a big one. This really is a community-driven effort. We want to be a partner and a resource in Baldwin Park, but really it's the community that we want to drive this. Resiliency, our goal is to build a more resilient community in the face of a disaster. And a lot of that is through leadership development, recruit volunteers from Baldwin Park, train and develop, and develop them through all of our many resources that we're going to bring, which I will share with you on a little bit. So why Baldwin Park? Jeanne is going to cover this portion now with the, I cover what are the hazards and risks we face in Baldwin Park.
So Mayor and City Council members, thank you for inviting us. Really quick, Erica mentioned we've done a couple iterations of this kind of program throughout L.A. County. Baldwin Park, we're identifying risks and hazards. These are very top-down, generalized, not necessarily specific to your community. When Erica works to develop the coalition here, we're going to be looking for input for all of the stakeholders as to what are their specific challenges, and that may be integrated into the plan that is developed. Generally speaking, there are some issues that we've discovered in other places and in L.A. County, primarily resulting around issues with flooding, okay? Hazardous materials, Baldwin Park is a, has a community, has some areas where there's businesses. Businesses sometimes have hazardous materials, and those sometimes pose risks to the public that live in and around them. Fire, you'll see in another slide where there's a lot of instances of home fires, and the L.A. region responds to an average of two a day. In Baldwin Park, which will be another slide, there was about 25 over about a five-year span where your residents reached out to the Red Cross for assistance. That could have been financial assistance, that could have been assistance working with their landlord or insurance agencies, somewhere the Red Cross provided services to those residents that were displaced. Earthquakes, everyone knows L.A. County, California in general, we have a serious hazard in terms of earthquakes. And transportation, so Baldwin Park is bisected by railways and the 10 freeway. There were some challenges with the 10 a couple decades ago. You may remember Northridge, some significant issues about traversing the freeway. That may not have been here, but we don't know if the next earthquake that comes, that will be the result. If that happens, how do your residents get around? If they need to seek services or evacuate in certain areas, and they're closer or they're bound by the roads, they may not be able to get out, that poses a hazard that we want to try and work and address. So earthquake hazard, you can see kind of, you don't have fault lines in your specific area, but you are very close to where there's potential significant damage and shaking, right? This is generally, this orange area is focused on the ground beneath us. So things like liquefaction and some other areas where you may not have stable housing. The big issue isn't necessarily how many people may be severely injured or need hospitalization. It's more about the week after, the two weeks after, the months after, if people can't get back into their homes. So that sort of leads us to some things that we want to develop. But another issue is potentially a flood hazard. You're not in a flood plain, but I've also been to places deployed where it was a 500-year flood plain, and it was a 30-year in a row they flooded, right? So there is a dam nearby, L.A. is a very flat city. We already know we get two or three inches of rain, all of a sudden the streets back up, there's giant puddles, people can't drive through them. It's definitely an issue in any area that is bound by a lot of traffic. Some vulnerability indexes, the Red Cross was part of a study many, many years ago, which initiated Prepare L.A., the first version of it, looking at potentialities for individuals in their recovery. So in other words, post-disaster, what are the challenges that they may have towards getting back onto their feet and moving towards a new normal, right? There's 14 indicators. Baldwin Park is in a kind of a lighter area, the darker green right here that you see has more higher indexes. But there are some issues here, such as transportation, we identified earlier. There's issues where it's mixed use, like your city has, again, hazardous potential through businesses. There are other issues, such as if there's transportation problems in a household, they don't have a car. They have to live near where they work and they depend on public transit. So there's a number of those issues, and Erica is happy to discuss them as we move forward. So these are the 25, 26 incidences that I mentioned in the last five years. You can see with these little dots are mapped out where we went. And this is primarily as a result of the fire department. They reach out to us that there's residents displaced at a home fire that are seeking assistance, and Red Cross works to support them. This has increased dramatically, an average of 3% to 5% throughout the county every year. So you'll see another increase like that moving into 2020.
And just to note too, that's another thing. So we don't self-deploy, the Red Cross is not, the fire department, the police department at times, they're the ones that give us a call to let us know that there's been a home fire, there's been a displacement, and then we go out upon their request. So we don't get deployed, and a lot of folks think that we do, but that's not the way it works.
Does anyone have questions about the disaster components that I just kind of quickly rolled through?
No.
Right, thank you. All right, so what does Prepare Los Angeles offer? It prepares life-saving services, resources, and training, support, facilitation, coordination, organizing, convening. That's a big one. We convene all of the partners together, and all the partners include the community residents too. And we want to include the community residents as much as we can, if they wish to be a part of it. Again, we are your partners in this effort. So the way we look at the L.A. program too is through the four pillars of resiliency, is preparedness in the city, where are we at with preparedness, recruiting volunteers, understanding the hazards that we just went through, and then resource. What resources currently exist in the community, and then what else can we bring? So some of those reses are the Pillowcase Project and Preparedness Shows for children. So those, we start young TK age, where we bring in a storybook, a penguin, and we talk about what it is to be preparedness and what happens during an earthquake or a fire. We try to make it so that when something does happen, that the child will understand it somewhat. It's a traumatic event as it is, but we want to make sure that the child is not run off, knows what to do. Prepare You for Individuals, Seniors, and Teens, we also have it for 3 to 6th grade of teenagers, seniors. It's a different, different Prepare You for each age group because there are different things to consider, of course. We also work with continuation of operations, planning for businesses. We know a community will bounce back when businesses open their doors back up. We also offer first aid, CPR, certificate training. And for, for communities like Baldwin Park, we offer $5 CPR training for the full certification, and then there's 30-minute free training as well, the hands only. Free smoke alarms and fire safety education. And each of your booklet, I placed a flyer. April 18th, we will be coming to Baldwin Park and having a home fire event. We're already working with the city. We have a meeting scheduled later this month to talk about the logistics of that event. Our goal is to install 1,200 free fire alarms in the city. We get the, you know, we get the community involved, the school district. Last week, I met with the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and other stakeholders, the Business Association, to try to get the community to come out for that event. It's a really great event, and the whole purpose is to save lives and hopefully make homes safer. And then, of course, recruiting of high school clubs. So we want to start, we want to start thinking about preparedness at a young age. So what have we done so far in the city? So so far with the installations, we've installed 217 alarms in 37 homes to date. We have two youth clubs, current and in progress. We see here that Baldwin Park, we need to reactivate a little bit, work a little bit more with that high school. We have 26 residents listed as volunteers. We have faith affiliates, which are St. John the Baptist and Baldwin Park bilingual Seventh Day Advents. We have our Service to Armed Forces program, which where we serve veterans. We've provided services to 40 individuals in the city. And we've done 744 Pillowcase presentations, I mean, 744 children have seen the Pillowcase presentation. So we want to definitely do a lot more of that through this coalition building. So again, we want to be a partner in this effort and bring the resources to make sure that the city is better prepared and can bounce back from disasters, large and small. It's not only earthquakes or large disasters, but it's also home fires and other activities that displace residents. So what are the next steps? Really, the next step is ongoing individual stakeholder meetings. I'm trying to meet with as many stakeholders as possible. I've met with already the city manager, Councilwoman Paul Fernandez. I would like the opportunity to meet individually with all of the city council members to further talk about this and how to get you guys involved. And then leading up to a community leaders briefing, doing a kickoff where we invite all partners in the city to participate, and then take a pledge. We have an actual pledge where people will sign, where they will commit to this coalition. And then from then, we will start our monthly meetings. At every meeting, we will bring a different training, a resource, CPR, a preparedness course. We're really going to listen to what the community wants us to provide, what resources we should bring to the table. So that is going to all be part of the coalition building. So that is our presentation, and there's my contact information. You have my contact information in your folders as well. So I'm open to any questions.
Well, first, I want to thank you. I think it's important for us to be exposed to what the Red Cross does in general, and of course, the services that we provide, educate the community. So definitely like to see this in the newsletter, we can place it in there. Besides, obviously, you will be out here in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any, what else?
Yes, I also want to thank you for being out here. I know how important it is for the Red Cross to communicate with the city so that they're working collaboratively with me. Thank you for helping our residents here in Baldwin Park. I do have a question. You met here August, I don't know if it was you or somebody from the Red Cross, August of 2019. Was it you that met Shannon? They had a meeting with the E-Team in August with Daniel, the Chief of Police.
Yeah, it was myself, Scott Safer, who's our Disaster Program Manager, who's typically with me.
So you had already been here and given this presentation, correct?
It was not this presentation per se. It was just the initial conversations of what we'd like to get started with the coalition.
Okay, so I, back then, I was in the understanding that we were already working with you guys because you guys were supposed to be meeting with the E-Team and everybody involved. Can you tell me what happened with that?
Yeah, well, that was just the initial meeting to meet with the city manager and to kind of get the idea going. And then from then, since August, we've been meeting with individual stakeholders. So I met, for example, the Business Association to kind of get the idea going. And then we've had a follow-up meeting since then. So there's a lot of work that goes into the behind, the leading up, making sure, you know, what shelters we have in the city, who the partners are. I've been in regular communication with the council member. So now, this presentation is kind of like, okay, now we're kind of getting, really getting momentum. And hopefully in March, April, we can really get the coalition kicked off and have regular monthly meetings.
So because I just wanted to make the point that you had already started this program, so we had already been in talks, well, I wasn't in talks, but I know Shannon and the E-Team and the Chief of Police, whoever that person was at that time, was already communicating with you, and you were already working on bi-monthly or meetings or what would that be?
No, not, not regular meetings. It was just probably two meetings we had, two meetings. And I know I've been kind of collecting, just putting together kind of a community profile since our initial meetings, and then identifying who are the folks that we talk to.
So just a little bit here, to provide a little bit of context for you, for all of us. So I reached out to the Red Cross quite some time ago, you know, soon after I was elected, knowing the work that they did in L.A. and other parts regarding Preparedness L.A., and also understanding that most families across the country, including businesses, can afford, you know, an emergency that impacts, you know, 500 or more, including our private businesses. So I did ask for the Red Cross, along with Shannon, along with our police department, early on and back in March of 2019, to come and meet and have them have a discussion in regards to, you know, this Preparedness 2.0. Part of that discussion was to develop an MOU, or I think you guys called it a little bit different, which this was, was executed soon after that. And what we've been doing, you know, briefly in the past, in the background, is I've been engaging the Red Cross and, you know, putting them in contact with various stakeholders to begin, you know, laying the groundwork. But, you know, as you can imagine, this is about partnership, so hence the reason for why we're here, why we've asked them to be here today, because we would like to expand the partnership and have everybody involved to provide their, you know, their coalition of folks to, you know, better enhance this program as we move forward. But what's been also happening since August is, you know, the Red Cross were deployed, such as Erica and Norma, and some other folks were deployed to Ridgecrest and other parts of the country. So one of the things that we recently had a conversation, it was back in December, was now finding a date that would collectively work for the community and the Red Cross and staff to be able to move forward, because this is now going to work in, essentially, there's two tiers. One is the community stakeholder level, in which, you know, Erica has been talking extensively about. And then also the, what I'll call the management level, in which, you know, our city staff, along with our chief and others, are going to be meeting to be able to solidify what that looks like, along with the school district, you know, using their shelters, you know, and having an understanding of what that MOU looks like during times of disasters. Given their experience, they will certainly share with you that, you know, when the big one does come, whether it was back in July 4th or now, it's going to be the first responders that respond to, you know, that come to the assistance, and those first responders are the community members. It's not your police, it's not your fire department. They will come, they will come and, you know, do that, but at the, your first person to come and help you is going to be your neighbors. And that's what we want to do, is provide a level of training, because, you know, people, people, people will rise to the level of their training. They don't rise to the level of expectations during disasters. So as much as we can provide a good amount of information to our community about what it means to be prepared for events, whether it's the Pillowcase, which I'm going to ask if you can work with Manny to provide that type of training with our seniors, because that's one of our most vulnerable populations, would be certainly helpful in the next couple months. Helps us all as a community, and again, provides another opportunity to enhance government services across the board, partnering with, you know, our great partners from the NGOs, such as American Red Cross. So hopefully that puts a little context as to why we're here today.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, the, speaking of the Pillowcase, you said you provided services for future, and was that with the, working with the school district?
That's been throughout, the school district, different community organizations that service kids. So we definitely want to provide more of an emphasis on that program, so.
Yeah, so I would, you know, Paul had touched on it, you know, contact the school district, maybe have presentations, have parent meetings, so that you can provide this information to them. But another thing, I know Daniel Rodriguez is our safety person here in the city of Baldwin Park. How is he involved with this?
He was involved in the preliminary meetings, and he'll work with the police.
Was he invited to this meeting, and was he not here?
To this, to this one, I'm not sure if he was or not.
Because he should have been here, I think.
He's familiar with the information.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody's working together.
Yes. And if I may, I'll be reaching out to you guys, and hopefully we can individually get together, and I can kind of pick your brains too and see who else you like in the table, because it's open not just to large businesses, large stakeholders, but we really want the community involved, because it's really a community that effort with our support, of course. Thank you for having us.
So my question is, what is expected of the city in this partnership?
Well, there is, in everybody's folder, I've actually included a statement of understanding. So really, it's kind of assisting us with the convening of the coalition, basically. Promoting as well, our services, basically, opening the door. You know, that's basically what it is, is opening the door so we can kind of come in and bring our services. We want you to be a part of it as much as, you know, a main partner. So that's really your part of it.
Facilitating.
Facilitating, for example, we have this Sound the Alarm event coming up April 18th here in Baldwin Park. You know, we already have a meeting later this month to talk about the logistics. That kind of partnership is what really the city's been operating.
And yeah, when I think about emergency preparedness, it takes me back to the Wind event that we had back in, I think it was 2011. And yeah, there was the event that occurred, which was really scary, and obviously, the first responders were, you know, responding as needed. And then there was the aftermath, and it was really the aftermath that was a real challenge, you know, as far as working with our partners and cleaning up and addressing some of the residents who had their home red tagged and trees falling on. So I guess from the list that you just provided, I'd be curious to know as we move forward, because I know that it's developing, and it also is, it requires meeting with stakeholders, but kind of like what will be the priorities that come to the, to the top, right? The top three priorities, and then I think being able to then focus on the most effective partnerships. And obviously, working with our police department, I mean, our chief here, he's a, you know, a new chief for the city, so that's very exciting for us. And perhaps, once we identify those priorities, then we can engage, you know, more effectively the partners that will help us in those types of events, right? And just deploy.
Yeah, definitely.
And prepare.
Yeah, it's really like, for example, what we're doing in Pomona, we're looking at it at two sides. You know, there's your stakeholder side, the emergency preparedness folks, making sure that they're, everybody's talking to each other. Everybody's sharing, everybody has a emergency plan, or they should have an emergency plan. So making sure that those emergency plans are shared amongst each other. And this includes the churches, the faith affiliates, making sure that they're included in those plans. So we help as a convenor to that, to make sure that everybody's talking to each other. And then the other side is bringing the training and resources, making sure, you know, I was just meeting with YMCA last week, making sure that their staff is CPR trained or, you know, knowing that we have that resource available to them. Making sure that we can CPR train as many community leaders as we can, so that when something does occur, you have folks in Baldwin Park that can respond. First aid, there's preparedness courses, you know, there's shelter training. Shelter trainings, because like the council member said, when something does happen, you know, people think three to five days, but it's actually two weeks. And then we try to break it down real easy for people. We have a 21-days, 23-days, how to prepare yourself, each week, kind of what can you do each week? Maybe, you know, $2 worth, $3 worth, just, you know, start your kind of, start buying water, start buying canned goods. Just putting it in people's heads that, hey, it's, it's, it sounds monumental, and it sounds like a real big task. Let's kind of help break it down for folks, so.
How's the community being on part of your event on the 18th?
Well, we just, later this month, we're going to start the logistics, and then with the city, we'll kind of find out what are the medias. We'll, we'll take it out to, you know, the Baldwin Park has its social media. As far as appointments, because we, what we do is we try to schedule as many appointments in homes before. We have folks that actually go out and canvass and try to say, hey, we're going to be here on this and this day. You know, would, you know, can we come in and install fire alarms?
So on the 18th, are you having like a presentation, or what is it going to be like?
It's, it's a quality event, but it's really kind of in the morning, there's a kickoff, where we'll invite city council, where we'll invite our partners, where we say, hey, we're here to save lives. We try to keep the presentation as short and brief as possible, because really, we're trying to get out into the community and start installing fire alarms. It's an all-day fire installation program that really brings the community together with a break for lunch, of course.
So it's going to be based on whoever shows up to that meeting and are interested in it, or can people call in to you?
We bring people from all over, yeah. Our volunteers, we already have a base of American Red Cross volunteers, they'll come out and they install. There's a lot of folks that are passionate for this event, who we want to spread the word as much as we can, because we need volunteers.
Okay, so, just to clarify, so your volunteers are just randomly going to go door-to-door knocking, or how is that?
No, so there's a, yeah, so Erica mentioned earlier appointments. There's an American Red Cross group, as well as a partner that we have that's health promoters. They go door-to-door in the weeks before the event, every event. And we do this like a couple times a month, right, all over L.A. County. They knock on doors in each neighborhood, they have flyers, they talk about what the program is, and then they make an appointment. We aggregate all of the appointments together prior to the event and break out routes for the teams to go to, so it's more efficient. And then depending on how many volunteers we get, we may do just areas where there are no appointments. And if we have extra room or extra teams, we send them out. We've been really successful in the last five or so years, we've done more than 25,000 alarms in all of L.A. County. So yeah.
And the goal again is to install how many alarms?
I mean, it's to try and get 1,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's more clear.
All for free.
Yes.
All for free, yeah.
We provide an education piece as well, so individuals that have alarms already, we take 10 minutes and we talk to them about safety hazards in the home, earthquake preparedness, disaster preparedness, provide some information for them, and like a small disaster bag, yeah.
Another potential avenue could be the Ballpark Unified School District. They have that, that, the capacity to deal with blasting out the road.
Oh, yeah.
They have that, the capacity to deal with blasting out there, but it may be more than 1,000.
Well, you mentioned the newsletter, too.
Newsletter, yes.
So yeah, I mean, there's a lot of ways the city can support us in getting the word out.
Then we'll also do the marquee here, and we could also use one of our, one of our billboard signs, since we have access to that for residents, so.
If you actually contact Nancy Leon at the school district, maybe you could provide flyers, and they'll approve them, and they'll distribute it to the schools so the families are aware, so that would be Nancy Leon.
Nancy Leon.
Do you want to take out my phone and text myself?
Definitely. This is great, this is good. Any other questions? Any other questions? I guess not, at this point. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you mind if we took out of order the item for Saseo?
Yes, sir.
Because the lawyer's standing by, we can call the lawyer, but I wanted to give you a short presentation before we call.
Yeah, so that's fine, huh? So at this point, we're gonna go ahead.
We're going to close session.
So just for that one.
For about maybe, I guess, in 10 minutes or so.